Welcome everybody to the Town Board and Planning Board work session. Thank you Planning Board for joining us. We'll be talking about guidelines for small cell wireless facilities. And I would add, nice to get together without talking about Chapel Cross.
Something different.
Exactly. So, okay.
Sabrina has the board.
Okay, perfect.
Well, as both boards are, you know, the Town Board is considering changes to the wireless law in the Town Code to incorporate small cell wireless that we are being faced with due to the FCC regulations. The one area that the town has been left in control of is aesthetics. So, the draft guidelines that I sent to you are guidelines that were reviewed by myself and council. We reviewed them together in relation to the proposed changes to the wireless law that you are considering. Just to give you a sense, the guidelines in general are divided into two sections. There's the aesthetic section, which is by right under your purview, the town's purview. It would be under the Planning Board's purview per the local regulation. There are also locational guidelines. These are guidelines for applicants. We don't have a lot of control or authority over the location guidelines, but in speaking with council, it was thought to put these in here to give applicants a sense of our preference, to give a little more detail than the law gives. So, the language in here is softer when it comes to the location guidelines and it's more restrictive when it comes to the aesthetic guidelines. And these aesthetic guidelines, the idea about issuing separate guidelines is that the code will reference the guidelines. We can change the guidelines much easier and more often than actually changing the legislation. So, this document will become a changeable document moving forward. So, if we find out that what we're asking for aesthetically is not possible, then we can change our guidelines without affecting our law. One of the things when, as we were doing the research and talking to the industry professionals about small cell wireless, there isn't a lot of known technology out there. The technology is very different than what you see in a cell tower and an equipment compound. It's much smaller. We've been told, you know, that they don't need generators, for example, associated with the small cell, that they're battery run, that they're smaller, that they can be concealed. So, it's a much different type of technology when it comes to setting it in the environment that it's going in. So, I can go through each one of the aesthetic concerns that we have identified. There are, there's some repetition between the guidelines and the legislation. And it's there purposefully. In our legislation, it means we want it, it's not a choice. We include it in the guidelines to make it easier for applicants to understand it's required and to make sure that they're consistent and carried through. Okay? One of the, one of the major points that is more predominant in the legislation has to do with double poles. If they're coming in to locate small cell wireless and there's a double pole condition, we are requiring that that second pole be removed. That is an aesthetic concern and it's something that we are, is within the legislation which has higher authority than the guideline.
I have to tell you Sabrina, that's also a real safety concern. The Town Board has been actually very active in working with the utilities to try to eradicate the proliferation of double poles. They really affect your sightline.
Yeah.
Especially along our main roads. Jeremy would certainly be one to attest to the fact that along the Littler Road.
You got so excited, started running.
Something I said, something I did. But, we've been very active in working with the utilities about trying to hold their feet to the fire about getting rid of these double poles. It is our understanding that by the terms of authorization through the Public Service Commission, they are required through this engine's itinerary to eliminate them within a certain period of time. Unfortunately, because there is no monetary penalty associated with JELI DUSO, it's all voluntary. To say that their compliance has been spotty is being kind.
Right. So, again, the intention of including it here is to really invoke a third-party responsibility to help take care of some of the town nuisance issues aesthetically that we can.
Yeah, so it is very well positioned here because 99% of the poles in town are in fact Verizon's responsibility has the last one on the pole to remove. So, they actually carry a role.
Before we get into those guidelines, I had a question, Bill was saying, asking, that's really for Jennifer and Nick. And that is, is it really, really true that we are limited to aesthetic and that we cannot exercise what we've always do with our local zoning etc. in terms of public health and welfare? I mean, how can that be? And then what, can we not still impose that in our, in our guidelines unless the federal law actually specifically prescribes that we cannot do that? To me, it's just mind boggling. I mean, I'm sitting here saying, what about sightlines? We can't put that as aesthetics, not aesthetics, it's safety. It's public welfare and safety.
So, the Federal Telecommunications Act, which we're familiar with from the app being applied to large cell towers, also applies to these small cell facilities. And it's in that respect which the municipalities are preempted from looking at the safety aspects. When we talk about the safety aspects of the health impacts, we're not talking about sightline distances. Sightline distances are still within your purview because that would be a safety impact and somewhat related to aesthetics, but certainly safety. When we talk about safety and health, we mean you can't say that an antenna facility is too close to a house or a playground or something of that nature. Federal government has said that's not within the local jurisdictions purview to examine and say you don't want an antenna near a particular store, a particular house. Because the FCC has guidelines, they've done a lot of emissions testing, they say as long as the applicant says they do not exceed that threshold, then the municipality can't inquire. But, to your point about double poles, about safety impacts from sightlines, being set back from a certain area, as long as you can justify it in those traditional police powers, then the board has the ability to do so.
Well, my take on it would be this, I would just finish and then unwrite Jennifer's speech, is my impression overall of the law is that the, from my perspective, is that the tone of the law should be strengthened and not just this mealy mouth aesthetics where we really want to, you know, get a tone in there about public safety. So, it's, I don't think it's sufficient from my standpoint to ask them to remove a double pole because it's aesthetics. I think there should be something in here that really strengthens where we're coming from as a community and say, yeah, it's aesthetics, but also this, we think this is a police issue, this is a safety issue. And to the extent that we're creative and wheel, and weave that into the law, I personally prefer it. Because to me, and we've had conversations on the Planning Board about this, we understand that the federal guidelines, we have to, we have to abide by those. But, to the extent that we can find cracks in there where we have a bona fide knee or right to really look at this a little bit more closely and to give some teeth to it, I think we should do it. And my overall impression, which was a very brief impression, having just gotten this recently, is that the tone of the law is, is very soft. I may be confusing it with the guidelines, which are extremely soft because it basically said, how would you like to do this? It was like, well, we don't have to. But, the law itself, it seems to me, my perspective, is that the tone needs to be tightened up and needs to be strengthened.
Well, I don't disagree with you that when it comes to health and safety, we need to make sure that we strengthen it where needed. But, at the same time, I feel that we need to make, not make it overly restrictive because I think that ultimately we do want to encourage this technology within our town. Because we do ultimately want to be able to have 5G wireless within our, within our town borders. So, I think we have to strike the right balance between, you know, making sure we're ensuring the health and safety concerns that you raised, but at the same time not being overly restrictive and excluding ourselves from being among the first communities selected for this.
I suggest that, I don't think it matters how restrictive we believe our language is in the guidelines or our legislation. This technology is coming and the FCC is not gonna, is not gonna, is not gonna support us in that. So, I wouldn't be concerned about suppliers coming in and saying, well gee, you know, Newcastle, they're kind of, you know, tough, so we're not gonna provide the technology, they're gonna come. And I said, I agree with Bob that, and I don't know, I don't think you can get into the technology aspects of it.
No.
Right. But, I do think that to the extent that, yes, aesthetics is all we have to deal with, we maybe ought to be sure that we're interpreting that in a way which really does protect the community and is very strong language.
I will comment on one aspect, Tom, is that from our experience in representing a number, a number of municipalities, we've also, our firms being a forefront of this, and we've spoken with other legal attorneys throughout New York State, Syracuse, and Plattsburgh, and other municipalities, who spoke with New York State Conference of Mayors, and we've spoken with council for the telecommunication facilities companies. And it's our understanding that they are looking at communities and those who put up barriers, they're either litigating or they are moving on to other communities who are more receptive to this technology. And they're also looking to work with communities to come up with the right type of legislation that addresses and tries to strike that balance that you mentioned. So, the industry is looking at the different types of legislation that's out there and we've seen in some communities where they had applications, they pulled those applications away from those communities.
But, they're coming back.
No, not, no, not.
Not anytime soon, but they're coming back.
Well, when we're done with all the other communities, then they'll come back.
Yeah, they'll come back.
And they'll, and they'll look, and they're looking for a community in which they can litigate against, also to find that perfect test case.
Well, that's fine, but, but I guess I'm saying that. I understand that, I guess I'm saying, I don't know to what advantage it is to the community to say, oh, let us be the first. I don't understand that mentality.
Well, we're not, we're not the first. I think we want to be among the first. I think when people get off of the train to look at our community and want to buy a home in our community and seeing that we're connected to 5G wireless, I think that's a, I think that that's a potential selling point. I also think it'd be interesting, we had this conversation earlier, about the idea of potentially pursuing municipal wireless at the same time that we're pursuing this. I think this might open up a lot of opportunities for us. And I'm not disagreeing that the legislation should be tightened. All I'm saying is I think we need to be careful not to make ourselves overly restrictive. I mean, one of the questions that I have is whether the language in here that pertains to the performance bond, if that's something that's standard or, or, you know, how that, that's new to us, right? So, that came in through the Planning Board review and I'm just interested to hear how that sort of came in and whether we think that that's something that would, you know, potentially turn off these providers.
Sure. So, the performance bond issue is something that we've seen more communities don't have it than do have it. There's certainly communities that do, but it's, I would not say it's typical that you would have that requirement. For example, I don't know that you necessarily have it with other utilities that are out there, and that's one of the things the FCC is looking at. How is wireless facilities being treated compared to other utilities? Is, for example, when Con Edison puts up a transformer on a pole, are they being required to put up a performance bond? Is Cablevision being required to put up a performance bond? One of the, the FCC ruling in the summer, in August, was very strict and the intent is to assist the, the town communication companies in rolling out 5G. That's one of the goals of the FCC. So, we're looking to make sure that utilities are being treated equally. And so, the performance bond one is one that is not standard or typical.
I have a couple of questions following up on both the aesthetics of the pole and then on treating utilities the same. First on the aesthetics of the pole, I think it's great that the guidelines address getting rid of the double poles. We've all seen yellow, yellow cord around poles all over town and I think, you know, we'd like to see those go. But, those are the poles that have sort of already broken and then they've put another pole and lashed the two together. But, you also have the poles that are, you know, tottering over under the weight of all the wires that they're currently carrying and then, you know, you're talking about adding more apparatus to it. And we don't, I don't really know how much that apparatus weighs or, you know, how much where it's positioned is gonna affect the leverage of the pole going over and everything. So, is there anything that we can do to address replacing not just the double poles, but the poles that look like they're in danger of coming over, you know?
There are, and I believe it's in your law, and I would defer to council for the exact location, but there are requirements that the poles for mounting the 5G are structurally sound. You know, while there are size limitations that are equivalent of a, of a large cardboard box or a small refrigerator, there's weight associated with that, there are technical specifications associated with that, and there's weight bearing analyses that must be conducted to make sure that the pole can withstand the weight. And in that vein, that it's not teetering over or unstable, because then that gets into the public health and safety. 5G is intended to be in more populous areas or at least the research that's out there, the implementation that we're seeing is in more densely developed areas where there's more impact to buildings. If you look at the guidelines, we specifically identified, if you're looking at two, a house and a house, where that pole should be. It shouldn't be in the middle of the house, it should be between the buildings, you know, things of that nature. Because they are, they are more apt to locate 5G in areas where there's more dense development because of the existing network that already exists through the telephone poles, through the light fixtures to allow it to integrate easily. So, your point on structural stability is, is most definitively within the regulations, very similar to what we look at when we look at a large tower to make sure we're not creating a hazardous situation.
Okay, so that also brings up another question that I had about both the guidelines and the draft law, which is that sometimes it wasn't quite clear to me that it referred to both new poles that were being installed just for 5G as well as old poles that were going to be retrofitted for 5G. And I wondered if they were both going to be subjected to the same standards of testing. Okay, so, if that, that's.
Yeah, if it's not clear in there for old and new, then, then we need to make it more refined to be old and new.
Is this possible to put a height, a minimum height of the pole in there? The reason why I'm thinking is that the trailer basis is a very interesting point about the age of the pole and the, for the most part, the leaning poles you're gonna find are the older poles that have been up there and, you know, just sort of filling over. The new poles that have been put in, Bob, the new poles that we put in town are significantly taller than the old poles.
About 15 feet, I believe.
15 feet higher, so I think, so.
45 feet.
They're 45 feet versus, is there a way that we could restrict them to the newer 45 foot poles? So, at least we know that, number one, those poles are significantly larger in diameter than the old poles, so there's, they are more structurally sound, they've been more recently put in, so, you know, there's a little bit more head to them. And there's also a little bit more room to be able to put this stuff on without feeling like, you know, the, just the sheer volume of apparatus that's being carried on.
I think you can make that requirement, but you also want to balance again the aesthetic impacts. So, I don't know that you want to have it as a black letter rule because in a particular location, a 45 foot pole may not be appropriate.
I think Joe has a good point with just the preferences and if it's going to be put on a short pole and it needs to be reviewed for a more sporic, more comprehensive structural review. Because I would say depending on where you are in town, 15% of the poles are listing at more than 15%.
Right.
The other thing that you need to keep aware of is that you don't want to have basically an effective prohibition.
Right.
So, if the, if the carriers come in and they say, well, that's great, your preference is to be located on these new or higher poles, but in order for us to provide our service, we need to be located on these smaller, older poles, as long as those smaller, older poles are structurally sound and safe, you know, I don't think we can require them to be on the newer poles if it's gonna prohibit it.
I think the New York.
But, what we've actually.
But, I don't know if it works for Millwood, right? Does Millwood have the, the newer higher poles?
I think Millwood has the newer pole.
Does it? Okay.
West End has the newer poles.
What we've actually seen in some communities is that Verizon landline will replace a pole with a taller pole in the anticipation that within the next couple of months, a cell application will come onto that pole. And that's what we've seen, there's, in January, a new pole goes in and then three months later, an application comes in.
That's a good thing.
Again, yes and no, depends upon the location.
Yeah. To kind of that same point, so, we have a section in here on, on mounting location and it first says, I'm just on page seven, it's in the aesthetic guidelines, that, I was not clear, where it says it should be the top of the structure, which is good, but then aligned with the center line of the structure. So, I would kind of hate to see, especially in this downtown where we just put new poles and we're trying to have everything higher for sightlines, to have these giant boxes kind of right in the middle of the poles. Can we mandate that they be mounted higher?
What, on poles that are town poles or Con Edison poles?
Well, they're all Verizon.
They're all Verizon poles, okay.
Yeah, they're all. But, isn't it in sort of a pecking order of what's where on the pole? There has to be standard placement.
The wires.
I don't know that's.
For example, they won't place on a pole which has a transformer.
No, I'm talking about the pecking order, which is. No, there is, like, Con Ed is all the way on the top and then the utilities are lower, but they're still, I mean, they're too low here, I think. But, they still, instead of having it in the mid-center of the pole, these big boxes, I feel like they should be higher up just for aesthetic purposes.
But, to the point Holly makes.
No, look at them.
They can, but the electric code has certain separation requirements from when you can have these facilities below the wires and certain spaces also reserved for other wires. So, I think keeping that in mind, Jess, you can, when it comes to an application, you can try to push it as high as possible, but there may be limitations on how high.
Where do they fall within the pecking order for utilities?
Where do the cell, the small cells? I honestly don't know.
So, there's, there's a provision governing height of the infrastructure itself on a pole and it's in, please aren't numbered, but it's section, well, small item 11 within the small cell section. I follow. And it does say, it says a small wireless facility shall be no higher than the minimum height necessary. So, really, this is, this is.
Who determines the minimum height?
I know.
Yeah, you want it.
What is the minimum height necessary?
And there's too much subjectivity here where the applicant's gonna come back and say, oh, we determined the minimum height is this.
Yeah.
And then when we say, how did you determine that? Oh, that's proprietary, we can't share that information.
Oh, no, it's as high as the ladder can reach.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where it's kind of squishy in here.
And it says, and it says minimum required, but it doesn't give a maximum.
Right.
And so, you know, and it looks like the monopoles are what we call wireless facilities. Now, they have a maximum of 150 feet, but there's no maximum on the small cell. So, when does a, when does a small cell cease to be a non-small cell?
You know, they can be on a pole as high as 150 feet too. I mean, there's no limit on how high that small cell.
And we had conversations in the Planning Board, Bob has filled this in a number of times, he's cynic. So, he has said that no matter what, Con Edison, you'll say, well, that pole's structurally sound and we're not going to be able to say anything unless we have something in the law that says you've got to take into account the weight bearing, the wind projection that you, you're introducing as well as the aesthetics. That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying that, you know, it's, it's important to have those things in there besides, you know, just the aesthetics.
My understanding, and I'm a little fuzzy on the technology part of this, Drew is a lot more well versed at this than I am, but my understanding is that the, the technology is such that they actually want to keep these facilities lower to the ground as opposed to your typical cell tower where they want to get the highest point. They want to remain closer to where the actual users are.
Right, because they're really hideous, like, and they're big. And so, we just spent all this money, for instance, like trying to make our downtown Chapel Pole look nicer and now you're gonna put these big giant boxes as low as possible on a pole.
And that's what Sabrina was trying to address with the aesthetic guidelines, to try to get these to, to not look like a big giant box on a pole.
Correct.
To have it be shrouded, have it look like a light pole, have it look like, so that you would never even know that that is a wireless.
But, I would change the language to say the maximum as opposed to the minimum, I think.
Or have a range.
We'll take a look at that.
As short as possible, but no higher than.
And Bob, to your point about the, the heights and everything, it is addressed on page 15 in section nine where it talks about general and specific requirements for small wireless facility, talks about making sure that you establish that you meet certain codes and one specifically for wind.
I'd like to return to Greg's point, which I think actually applies to, I made a list of, after having gone through this the other day, the aesthetic community care for things that are apparently the ones we're saying we may have most control over. And it may not be complete, but it's camouflaging, location, screening, size, illumination, and then I guess a certain restrictions altered for locations. Now, every, it seems to me every single one of those items really depend on the technology that's available. And our understanding of that technology, because Greg's right, these guys come in and they just say, I'm sorry, that's the way it is. And we're having the conversation now about, you know, where it goes on the pole and how big it is. I think that that information, that those restrictions ought to be in here, but I think that we need to be sure we're in a position to really understand what we're talking about as we finish writing this and as we go ahead and pursue it as part of our Town Code. And I'd like to ask, has this been vetted by any consultant?
Yes. Yeah, part, part of the development of this between Drew and I is we did go to a wireless technical specialist and they, you know, again, the diagrams, the pictures, you know, they looked at this. And the technology is such that it's still very experimental in the sense of how to incorporate it from an aesthetic standpoint to where it's acceptable in the community.
And whether it has to be high up on the pole or down low on the pole.
They're particularly, they're down.
We don't know that yet.
We don't know for certain, but the guidelines of the technology require it to be lower than a standard, a monopole. That's the technology.
How high is a standard monopole?
We're looking at 150 feet.
Oh, you mean one of the towns?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and, and so, so they're localized, but is it localized to putting it into a peak of a roof line, on a, on a 35 foot high roof line?
10 feet up on a pole.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And there's not enough information or experience with this in communities such as ours that we have good benchmarks.
Do we have a sense of what the actual coverage is? I mean.
It's very localized.
How local is it?
I have an article from the New York.
500 feet, a thousand feet?
Average 500 feet, yeah.
I have an article from the New York Times from March that says, it says, place an average of 500 feet apart.
Average.
So, it's eight per mile.
Average, right, you can have.
It's like 300.
It probably depends on what's in between you and the next pole. You know, the, the topography, the bedrock, the.
And they go in limited areas, it's only in quote hotspots, so it's not going to be everywhere. It's down at the train stations where there's the intense use.
I suggest that that's not true. I suggest that once this tech, once these phones come out, everybody's gonna want one. Because that's the, that's the nature of our culture.
I think people will replace their utilities with this.
Everybody's gonna want one. And what they're gonna want to do is even if they don't use it to talk to their refrigerator, they're gonna want one.
Their phone will, their phone will connect automatically to 5G when 5G is available, will connect to 4G when 4G is available. But, everyone's gonna want 5G.
If it's 5G, they want 5G.
They're gonna want 5G on all their internet. Sure, but, you know, the model that they have so far is to put them in downtown areas. So, we've primarily been looking at them in downtown Chapel Valley, Millwood, possibly up towards Chapel Cross.
But, if we're gonna, if we're gonna write legislation and God, I think we have to anticipate that they're in the neighborhoods. There's a, there, Sabrina, I think I read somewhere that there was, in terms of preference for location and neighborhoods, it's one of the ones that was discouraged?
Mm-hmm.
And is it really, can you repeat that?
It's number 19 on the location guidelines.
And this is a least preferable location, this is a guideline, these are guidelines only. And, and the intention is to put them in the more densely developed areas, the commercial districts, it's not to put them in the residential areas.
Well, that would be their intention, that's what, I think.
It seems like eventually they'll want to put them into the residential areas.
Yeah, of course.
And these are guidelines, if you guys don't want the guidelines the way they're written, I mean, that's why they're drafted before you.
But, you know, but they would overcome that because it's a, it's a hierarchy of preference. So, if their need is to put it in a residential area and our zoning code says put it in a commercial area, but there's no commercial district in that area, then they would have satisfied the test by showing that they could only put it in the residential area to meet that particular need.
Yeah, but the particular need are the residences, otherwise we wouldn't put it in the residential area, right? So.
Well, it depends what the need is. I mean, the need may well be different for a commercial area, but if they have the need in a residential area, this code doesn't prohibit it from going into those residential areas.
Yeah, so, I don't, okay, I just don't understand why it's even in there then, because once they demonstrate the need, they'll do, they wouldn't put it in a residential area if there was no need. I mean, why would they do that? They'd put them in the commercial area where apparently that's where the, the density of use exists. So, I just, it seems to me that it's, doesn't make sense to have that provision in here. Just a thought.
You know, I'm a little, I mean, I do, I don't want to discourage the technology and I, I would love to see all downtown wireless, that's a different issue. But, I think, you know, when you, when you consider the fact that we're just, we're redoing the downtown and now we're going in, we're becoming guinea pigs for this thing, we don't[1770.23] We don't know really what it's gonna look like. We don't know where they're gonna mount it. There's a lot of unknowns and I think we're taking a big risk with our brand-new downtown to basically say, "Hey, utility companies," which are like the last person you wanna trust with anything, you know, "Do your thing. We're the test case."
But I would point, but I would point out if you don't have these regulations. Double act sword. They're coming, they're, when they come in and under the FCC rules, you can't, you can't slow them down. There's a shot clock. So you want to adopt these rules sooner rather than later.
Well, I'm not saying to, I'm not saying scare them, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying we should, I think we should be a little tough with these regulations because we don't want to leave this to their discretion. And if that scares them away, so be it. They're gonna come back eventually, but maybe there's gonna be some litigation. Maybe they're gonna learn. We're gonna learn some stuff. At least then we won't be the guinea pigs. Like, we'll know more about it, I agree.
And, and the technology will get smaller and nicer looking in the two or three or five years that we're in.
Right, exactly.
Exactly.
The 6G will be out in.
In a year, four years. And then there'll be a whole nother. And then they will remove the equipment from the 5Gs.
Yeah, those still really, exactly.
One of the things I learned in, uh, in platoon reconnaissance is that you chose the point man and you didn't let him stay out there forever because eventually he would die. And, and so, you know, to you, you said that, "Well, maybe you don't want to be first." I agree with that. And you agree with that. At least in concept, "I don't want to be first. And maybe there's a way, we do the words here and everything, that we can, we can have it, uh, tight to begin with and see what happens and then make adjustments as we learn from others in Plattsburgh or wherever, that how, how's it going with them and what are they coming up with?" I mean, because I'm looking in here, they're saying 20-foot poles or less, that's what they want to do. And, uh, and they need to be 10% above rooftops, I guess, and other things. So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff here that would be interesting to see more about.
Yeah, I agree.
And then quickly change things.
I just think it's a lot of risk, which I think we should.
But, okay, but in terms of the timeline, right, we had until April 15th, which has come and gone to be able to adopt our guidelines.
April 15th, right. No, this, yes.
So, I mean, I think we do have to move quickly towards, or we lose the opportunity to provide the guidelines period.
We can move quickly, but I think we should, this also, we should not, not be incredibly tough, but I think we should write, you know, draft a legislation of the guidelines that we feel comfortable with.
Right, like air on the water restricted side.
And if they're acceptable, great. If it's not, well, maybe it was for the best.
Do you have specific language that you would like to take in line of?
No, no, but I, but I think everybody's bringing up some good points and I think we should try to incorporate them as opposed to being scared that we're gonna scare them away. Because scaring them away may, I'm not saying we want that, but it could be a good thing in retrospect. We don't know. That's the point. We're taking a big risk. I think we should try to minimize our risk here.
But I think if you have enough language in the FCC rules and enough, um, la, language can be put in the code that allows you to regulate the aesthetics, so if you want something stealthed in the downtown area because you've spent a lot of money in improving your infrastructure, improving the look of it, and you're concerned, that's justifiable, right? If you're doing it on a, uh, isolated section of a road, there's a little difference there that reports should recognize. But if you downtown area, you've got buildings, you've put all this money in, that you can justify. And there is very good steffing technology that's, that, where they put it on light poles, they put it on traffic lights. So it can be done and you have the ability to have your regulations, to have that strength in there to support it.
So, I mean, to that point, someone's asked about specific language, I think in 20, on one of my graphs here, page six of seven, with recent line-out, consideration of alternate locations, the town reserves the right to propose an alternate location for a small wireless facility or wireless support structure at, at the one, uh, to the one proposed in the application. And of course, then the operator shall use it if it has, if it has the right to use the alternate location or reasonable terms, unreasonable terms and conditions, and the alternate location does not impose technical limits. The problem is that any kind of proposal that we make, we're gonna hear back that there are technical, technical limits. This is our experience. This is what happens. So my, my take on this is that that language, to what I've heard from Rob and Greg and others, is to the extent we can do it and not get in trouble, can that language be strengthened? So it's not that we propose it, we, you know, this is kind of, this is a requirement.
And, and I'm gonna.
Without using the word requirement, because I think that's probably not good.
And, and I'm gonna say to you, what I was told by this entire section by council, who is not here tonight, is that the location guidelines are dictated in the FCC regulation, that this is our best attempt to tell them, "We'd rather it be in a different location. Please try and work with us." That, and, and you can see these strikeouts here because it was much more specific.
Yep.
It related to the right-of-way, it related to the sidewalk. We took it out because it was conflicting with FCC guidelines.
But perhaps to the point that we just heard from Nick, that we would, uh, maybe make it a little bit more specific for certain areas. If we're talking about the, the hamlets and perhaps in Chapel Paul Hamlet, we say, "Because we just did X, Y, Z, we really don't want it, and, you know, it's not just a proposal. We really don't want it there." And anticipate that if you come in here and propose that, you know, we're gonna have a hard time with it. So I think also these guidelines are designed to let people know how to do this and how to best get through the process and do it without, uh, annoying people who are going to be customers. So, uh, I think it goes both ways. And this is a business deal. So, I mean, there's marketing involved in here as well. So, I mean, why come in here, put stuff up that's all tacky and then say, "Well, we want, also, you, we want you to pay for this and, and use it." I mean, obviously something to do with it, but, you know, we'll go through that.
And does that, do the FCC guidelines give them authority to just put new poles in?
No, you can regulate that for your street opening permits, right? So these are, are we going to go on, um.
Existing poles.
Existing poles or on private property? If it's an existing pole, then it's in the right-of-way and they would be putting, if they're putting a new pole, to answer your question, they need a street opening permit.
Do they need permission from the private property owner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And the private property owner would be paid something, I'd say.
Correct.
And can a private property owner say no?
Oh, absolutely.
And can a municipality say no and say, "We're not giving you a street opening permit to make any poll?"
We don't, we don't have any issues with street opening. No, we don't. No. No.
Well, they're, well, they're utility companies. They, they don't.
I mean, we, we have been toying with the idea of requiring it for, um, Con Ed insofar as gas mains in the street because we've had issues. Yeah, because we've had issues with the quality of the repairs just right down North Greeley Avenue.
Well, maybe we want to look at that and.
And create a process?
Right, for a street opening permit.
Well, that's if they're being on roads, right? If they're being on sidewalks. If they're coming and decide to rip up the sidewalks that we just did in town because they want to put in a different kind of pole.
Right.
Yeah.
The answer should just be no. If there's an existing pole, they could put something on. The answer should be no, you can't put in a new pole.
Right, would they need a permit?
Would we have that authority to do that?
Doesn't this actually say somewhere in there that we want them to locate underground as much as possible?
Yes, yeah. So that con, that contradicts that.
They're too complex to like.
We don't want them ripping up the sidewalks.
The, the antenna part, the receptor part is on the top, but then the equipment part of it could be underground. So they're, you know, you're gonna have.
And then the cab in the tree. Has to be.
Yes. Maybe.
Where does that go down?
So where? How would they, how would they do that downtown? They'd have to rip it up.
Yeah, they'd have to rip up the sidewalks again.
And I mean, but you were good.
That's okay, I do.
They'd have to put it back. They, they rip it up, they have to put it back. And, and typically, they will not be putting them underground because they, it's too expensive for them to put it back.
To answer your question, Jeremy, you, you can, it, at the end of the day, they can place it within a, uh, if they get consent from the property owner or the owner of a pole and they demonstrate the need, you can't tell them no. They can find somewhere to place it within reason. Unless you can demonstrate that it's aesthetic or safety concerns.
What about erecting their own pole?
What about what?
Directing their own pole.
If they get permission from the landowner, they can do so.
No, and on, on town property.
Town.
On a town right of way.
Like, can we say no if there are existing poles?
No, no, just.
No, Tom's question is if they put a, can they put a new pole in the town right of way, which is.
Yes, or no.
Well, it depends.
They're gonna give me a guess.
Perhaps, I might. So, look, I'm hesitating because at the end of the day, the only way they can meet that need is by putting a new pole in. They can put a new pole in.
There you go.
So that gets back to rent.
So part of it is, is no. They're stuck, they need to put it on a pole that doesn't exist because it's too far away. They could then stick a pole in our new concrete sidewalk and. And then we go, "No, you can't do that." They're gonna say, "Oh, we need to put it exactly right here and we have to put it there."
You're the propagation chair, but show why.
Well, they couldn't, they couldn't interfere with, for example, any of the compliance. No, no, that's why, that's why it's a potential, because if there are ways where you can deny it because of sightline distance, both vehicular and pedestrian, ADA access, truck delivery access to get to a. Right, 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 so we can, okay.
Right. By the way, when? If it's a town property, then we get.
King Street, we don't even own.
Yes.
County, right?
If it's state.
Are you reading my notes? King Street's a town. That's a good question. Well, except the, Robin, Robin is a good question, uh, at least started. Well, it's rent. Nick, Nick, what about, what about Robert's mentioning about, um, state county roads? If it's, even though it's in our municipality, if it's a state road or a county road, where do we fall in the pecking order of saying no, or you have to do something? If it's, if it's a state or a county road, then we don't have that authority because then it's. That's a problem for Newcastle.
Well, even.
That's a real problem for Newcastle. Yeah. What are we doing here?
Well, basically, this is the lower king.
What do we do in that situation? Because we accept it as our own, we maintain it as our own, but it's not ours. So then how do we regulate that? We don't?
We're, we're, we're gonna.
Is that accepted?
Well, but if it's within the, you tell me it's in the state or county right-of-way.
Yeah, if it's a small, small wireless application permit, a small wireless permit, then it gets regulated through this, this draft local law, which may potentially become your local law.
Even though it's, even though it would be on a state right-of-way?
Even though.
They still need the land use approval.
They still need the, the permit, the facility, the permit from the planning board.
So they could still cite one. We don't have the ability because it's not a town road to say no.
Right, but through, going through that.
The land use process, yes.
The land use process, that's where we talk about all these aesthetic guidelines and encourage them to shield it and camouflage it and do better.
So just as a, this is a bit of a digression, but I think it's important. If you could, it seems to me what we're doing here is we, or aesthetically anyway, we're trying to control where this particular utility puts its stuff, right, and how they do it in terms of, right, community character.
Yes.
We have Con Ed, we have Verizon, we have T-Mobile, we have all these other providers, and they don't have to do any of this stuff that we are now requiring or want to require this new provider to come and do. There's a way to go back and to, to write in, in legislation guidelines for the other service providers, the cable providers. Con Ed puts on the pole Verizon, wherever they put boxes, wherever they want to put them, uh, Verizon or T-Mobile or these, they will, they will hang giant pieces of equipment from a pole. They'll lay it on the ground. And apparently, we, we have the authority to do something about that and we aren't policing it, or we don't have the authority to do something about that.
It's interesting because I'm not a, uh, utility expert, but.
Or trying to be once here.
Some are probably franchise agreements, right? Uh, cable, Con Ed, electricity, those are all franchise agreements and they're regulated by the Public Service Commission. And that's different from the cell phones, which are regulated by the FCC. So there are different set of rules and regulations that govern each of those utilities. And how it interplays with the ability for a municipality to regulate, I'm just not as familiar with.
But we're asserting the ability to do it here.
Because we've been given the opportunity.
Right, under the FCC rules, we have the ability to regulate the aesthetics aspects of it.
That's it.
We don't have that ability, to my knowledge, with respect to cable and wireless.
Has it been specifically denied?
Denied, denied, you mean with respect to the other utilities? I, I don't know long ago, I don't.
Yeah, right. That's the interesting part now.
Well, I have to tell you.
Yes.
Just, just as an interesting aside, when we tried to find utilities for double poles being up in our town within six months after an emergency, the Public Service Commission paid us a visit and told us that, that we were well beyond our authority. We got their attention. The, uh, Con Ed is the one who contacted them to let the Public Service know that we were, uh, usurping their authority.
Okay, so why don't they make them do it?
Good question.
They, they do, through engines and it's a voluntary compliance and, like I said, spotty pressure.
They've been doing it. Slowly, but they've been doing it.
Yeah, no, they've been doing it.
So, just while, on the, we had, uh, 52 remaining, uh, pardon, pardon me, I apologize. Out of, uh, we have 64 remaining on the state road double poles, four on county roads, 78 on, uh, town roads. Um, in total, we've got 130, we've got 135 double poles on town roads, five on county roads, 52 on state roads. For a total of about 56 and a half percent to 7% of the.
I did warn you, this would be a digression.
Yes.
And by the way, if you look at the double poles, most of the double poles are half poles, which all the utilities are off, with the exception of Verizon. And that was our experience at Chapel Crossing too. It took Verizon forever to come, remove their wires and then apparently the, the rule is that the last one off the pole removes the pole. So the truth is, it seems like Verizon is, uh, the real problem on these things. I'm telling you, look around at some of these double poles and you'll see they're all half, they're all half cut.
So I think the direction from the collective boards is to go back, look at these codes and guidelines and make the guidelines more requirements and guidelines. Make the code, um, more precise, of as less wiggle room and more, uh, it's more finite and more specific. And I think those are, those are what you want us to go back and do. We'll have to clarify some of these things, street opening permits.
I would assume that as always, if we have specific concerns and things we'd like to change, we should send those comments to you.
Please, yes.
Thank you.
Copy Sabrina, but I think it's really important that specific, um, items be noted so that we capture what it is that the board wants exactly.
Yes.
I think one of the issues out there is the, in regard to the aesthetics, is that when you're doing a pole that's designed for a 5G installation, there are ways that sort of more attractive, the camouflage, but we need to have the do's and don'ts examples of the utility poles where presumably a lot of the initial, um, installations will be on existing poles rather than specially designed poles. So I've seen a lot of ugly pictures of, uh, existing utility poles retrofitted with 5G technology.
We have looked, have we looked at other design standards by other towns that have adopted them?
I made a note of that. So Pasadena, California actually has a very good, and it's Verizon, um, examples of camouflage that I've done. It's a, a street bench where they put utilities, the cabinetry, if you will, the equipment in a bench that, uh, that's on the sidewalk, so it looks more like it's blended in. A mailbox, a faux mailbox, if you will. So I'll circulate that to the two boards.
Are those things that they've implemented throughout the town that they've done in one space to say, "Here, here's where, look how."
We should camouflage a bench.
I don't.
Pasadena.
As a dedicated.
I don't.
Is that something some research? Because I kind of feel like, I mean, where did our basis of our guidelines? Did we copy something else?
We, we raised, it was a compilation. There was, um, Tennessee, there was, uh, something in Missouri. There was the C-TAC that Drew sent around.
So is it possible that, uh, these places, Pasadena, for example, because you've raised it, that these, uh, municipalities have a better understanding of the actual technology than we have? I mean, do they, can they say, "Well, we'll put one in a bench" because they know that the, that the equipment's gonna fit under a bench?
Yes, but the difference.
Or are these just sort of ideas?
No, 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 the difference there is in Pasadena, in my recollection, is there was a collaboration between the municipality and the providers, and that's why they developed those guidelines, because they wanted to become a 5G municipality, if you will. And that was the case in a couple of the communities. Syracuse, for example, Syracuse is the first in New York State to have entered into an agreement to make 5G within the.
So just, just to go back to the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me just finish my question. So Verizon has an understanding of technology beyond Pasadena, right? And they, they contributed to the guidelines. So is, can we get some kind of feedback from, maybe not Verizon, because apparently they aren't that friendly to us? But are there other providers who could, who we could tap to better understand technology, what they anticipate?
We just already asked those questions.
Well, actually, that's one of my questions, which is that, um, we basically, you know, kind of have a structure in place with most of the utilities, like cable or so on and so forth, where they contribute to the town's infrastructure. And the town basically has the option saying, "Okay, you can work within our boundaries." It almost feels to me that if we want to have the maximum amount of control, that we would, quote unquote, award our area to a single provider, giving us maximum leverage.
Well, that would have the ability to do, so.
What, you would basically say the town would like to enter into an agreement to develop our downtown hamlets for 5G?
So residents would really not like that, right?
Yeah. My, my, it's like Sprint.
Well, I'm just saying, but it wouldn't just be them. It would have to, we could have within the town, making sure that the 5G was available to anybody who wanted to log on to the system. I just don't see why, because I don't want to be a situation where, you know, this company is gonna be Sprint, this one's gonna be someone else, this is gonna be.
But that's how it's gonna. Yeah, that's the nature of it.
But why is it that you cannot basically have a more.
Because you can't exclude one company over the other. They all have equal opportunities.
So then Pasadena, they went into this with, how many providers are servicing Pasadena?
Not a California utility law expert. I don't.
Not in this house.
It just, it just seems to me that if you end up having a whole bunch of little.
I, I also, I also want to put out there, there are a lot of other entity, other locations that have guidelines. Those guidelines pre-existed the new FCC regulations, so their, their guidelines are no longer applicable. And I don't know, they have not promulgated new guidelines for small cells that are consistent with the federal regulations. So, you know, that's kind of the catch 22.
Pasadena, that small cell though, Nick, you were talking about, right?
Yes.
So maybe we should still look at that.
Does contact someone in Pasadena?
Yeah, and I would even say, I would also ask the people who've already had it for a couple of years, God, what would you like, wish you had done differently?
You send me, I'll go look at it for you.
I'd be happy to take a little.
Motion to send Tom to Pasadena. Right, one way, only one way. That was Bob we sent.
Well, that's a probably
So, yeah, so we'll circulate the Pasadena guidelines to both both boards, and we'll look into the questions that were raised tonight, and we'll have a revised draft around tomorrow morning at nine AM.
Nine AM?
I love it, I'm pulled, I love it. I still don't understand why to True, but I think we'll just tell them that any quantity business with us, come in and make a pitch and
But I don't think you, I don't think you could do a sole source for utilities.
But you might be able to give, if you bid it out, you could have like whoever gives the best options.
You just can't do that.
Why?
Because you have no registration.
Because FCC, right, FCC said everyone has issued a license.
What, it's the Wild West out there?
Yeah.
Doesn't have to make sense, it's just federal law, so.
So we, it does make sense.
And as you, if you have specific comments
We have got a big show.
I'm a venture, Jonathan.
All right. Carry on.
And how appropriately, Con Ed and Storm Hardening. Okay?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's just
All right, I'm back. Welcome back, everybody.
They weren't down there earlier today, that's for sure.
Notice some of us are wearing orange shirts, we'll go into that later.
Some of us forgot, some of us forgot, there's a home.
That's okay. Welcome, Con Ed.
So this evening we have Luigi Dingo and Tom Cesarino from Con Ed to come and talk to us about some of the storm hardening methods that Con Ed is seeking to employ in some of our areas in town. And about four or five years ago, we we requested a certain protocol from Con Ed when they were coming in and doing some significant tree trimming, more than just plain tree trimming, to come in and talk to the board about it, to give notification to the neighbors, and to just generally communicate with the community as to the extent of the storm hardening method so that nobody would be surprised.
Right.
So here they are.
Were you guys, did you guys, were you guys involved back then with the West End when they took out a whole bunch of trees? And we had that meeting over at the firehouse and and
No.
No, I was not, no, we weren't.
No.
He's gone, I think.
So when was that? It was about, I like Jill said, I think four or five years ago, and basically what happens is kind of, you know, they did provide notice to the individual property owners that they were going to come in and do storm hardening.
Right.
They didn't really define what that was. And property owners apparently all gave their consent, but what they didn't realize was the scope of it. And then people came home from work that day and essentially, it was like a killing field of trees.
Oh, that's up by T-Town.
Yes, yes.
I do remember, I do remember that.
I do, I do remember that. I wasn't in the group then, but I do remember that.
It was less than four years ago.
Yeah.
So we have that experience, that's why we sort of developed these standards, and and that's been our experience with it, so we're a little bit
Hazardous.
Yeah. Whatever the word is.
If you want, I'll explain to you kind of what we're doing right now.
Please.
Yeah, so I mean, everybody's familiar with last March, what happened, the two storms, Riley and Quinn, we renamed them. So we had a
I had that power until I couldn't follow, but go ahead.
I was actually in Puerto Rico, so I wasn't here at the time, but
Because someone's having an operation, and it kept getting delayed.
Okay.
An appendicitis or something.
That's right, that's right, and I couldn't get a good answer, but go ahead.
Couldn't get, yeah.
But anyway, after that, and just so everybody knows, I manage all the line clearance, the tree trimming contractors for the company. I also manage all the overhead contractors that we, we have some on the property now.
I'm going to want your cellphone for you.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. But, you know, after those two storms, you know, we actually had a vendor come in, Davy Tree Resource, and look at what we saw, what the results we saw, right? We saw a lot of what we call off right of way trees cause that damage. We do cycle trimming, we trim every three years, every circuit in the company within a three-year period gets trimmed, right? And it gets trimmed back a certain amount of feet. It's ten, ten and fifteen, up here in the county, it's six, six and ten down in New York City. But anyway, that that gets done routinely, we usually send out mailers, we let people know when we're doing that, that's been the routine for a long time. But what we saw from from these two storms was that when you have storms like that, you're going to get damage from trees that you would not normally trim. You're going to get what we call off right of way, so not where we would normally trim on people's property, twenty, thirty, fifty feet off of the right of way, and that's a possibility. Especially if they're dead, if they're dying, if they're diseased. For anybody that doesn't know, right, there's a huge problem with ash trees all in the Northeast, there's something called the Emerald Ash Bore that is destroying ash trees. And when I talk about how many trees we've removed, seventy percent of them are ash trees, so it's a big problem. But we we took that data and we took the information that they gave us, and we now have what we call a hazardous tree removal program. A lot of utilities are going to this, they're making it part of the overall program. We're not there yet, but this pilot that we've been doing and we've been running for since last October is basically to get the information that we think is going to tell us that they need to do this all the time.
We want that pilot in our town.
Well, I will tell you what we're doing.
We have written to Con Ed before and we've requested that the Cortland pilot come to our town as well.
Yeah, and we are, we are coming because in conjunction with that, we're also doing some overhead storm hardening work. So what we're doing is we're matching up some of that storm hardening work with the removal of these hazardous trees. So we actually do have three locations in Newcastle.
We did only share two.
I think there's a third that we have to talk about, which we didn't. It's not ready yet.
Okay.
But there's one on Almark Mount Kisco Road and Taylor Road.
Mm-hmm, that one you gave us.
And one on Croton Lake Avenue and Seth Canyon Road.
Yep, that one you gave us.
And then there's another one in the Millwood area, I don't have this one particulars on that one yet, but we'll obviously share that with everybody before that.
So when you're saying that you want to expand to these three areas, are you talking about doing only the right of way trees there? Or are you talking about the ones that are on private property as well?
These are only the hazardous trees, so we're going to do some
Only the hazardous, but hazardous trees in in the right of way or hazardous
Off right of way.
Private property.
Private property.
On property.
So what we're doing is we're doing some overhead storm hardening, which we're actually taking down some of the open wire, which is at the top of the poles,
Mm-hmm.
in places where there's not connected customers, so to speak. So there's no, maybe between ten spans of poles, it's just wire, there's no transformer that leads to a house or or no equipment. And we can actually take that wire and cut it down, and we can put much more resilient wire about twenty-five foot up on a pole, we call aerial cable. And it's much more resilient, it's it's got a steel messenger, it has rings, it sits in. You could have a tree come down on it and it's not even taken down.
And this is the thing that allows it to break away, right?
No, it's not a breakaway service. This is actually, this cable's about this thick.
Yeah.
Has all three, all three legs are inside of it.
Okay.
It's held up by a steel messenger. A tree can come and hit it, probably bounce right off, will not take it down anywhere near as easily as what the open wire does.
Really?
Yeah, so
Is that the plan to replace all of your wires that way, or drop the ones that are
No, we can't. Or here's the problem, we can't do that when when we have to connect to a transformer, that cable does not easily connect to a transformer. So we can only do it where there are no transformers or switches or anything. So we're picking certain spots that we found, and we're looking for them, and we're saying, okay, from here to here, these ten spans, which might be a thousand feet, twelve hundred feet, we're going to, we're going to take the open wire down, we're going to put this other more resilient cable up, and in those locations, we're going to remove the hazardous trees too, so we're going to make this
And how much higher are you placing the wire?
I see it lower.
Lower, yeah.
Thicker and lower, so the criteria for where the hardening efforts are going, is it based on outage data?
It is, and our engineering group has looked at all of that, they looked at where we have what we call worst performing feeders in, all throughout the county, so it's everywhere. And then we're looking at places where we actually have long runs where there are no transformers.
And they've all been identified as a
I wouldn't say all, I mean, there's, there's, these are the first ones that we've looked at. And we're, we're doing some in like just about everywhere in the county. So what we wanted to do is we want to take these hazardous trees down as well and make that a super
And we need permission from the property owner to do that.
We do, we do. So I'll just give you a little background on the program in general, because we're, we're doing, as we did, we did some pilot in Portland, we did a little bit in Yorktown. And we've spread out
So now my feelings are hurt, you went to Yorktown back then?
Well, we went to the two northernmost counties first. We, we took the data that we got from the report, you know, and said, this is, this is the hardest hit areas.
All right.
So right now, we've surveyed over fifteen hundred. Davy Resources, who did the report for us, is actually working with us, they've surveyed over fifteen hundred trees. We've identified over eleven hundred that we call are in imminent danger of failing, so probably within the next year. That's a classification that they use in the, in the line clearance, you know. That's what they call, yeah, whatever you want to call it.
Sorry to interrupt you, fifteen hundred, that's in Newcastle.
That's, no, that's
Not total so far.
That's total.
Well, put it this way, it's total so far.
The limit county.
It's, we've only been in a few, few municipalities, we haven't gone anywhere south of like Newcastle yet.
So between Mount Kisco, between Yorktown, Cortland and Newcastle, in the all three complete municipalities, Davy did a survey and identified fifteen hundred trees.
We did not survey every tree. We surveyed the worst performing circuits in those areas, it's a very small number.
Okay. And the radius around those circuses
That's a frightening number of trees.
Excuse me?
That's a frightening number of trees.
Yeah, eleven hundred out of fifteen hundred?
That's not even close.
Well, just if you only surveyed a very few
Oh, yeah, you're talking about to survey the amount of trees, it's in the hundreds of thousands of trees in West County, right?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, almost all of them.
That's not all coming down.
So is there radius around that transformer that you
Normally, we, like I said, I don't know if you can see the picture.
I can't see the picture.
No, no, I didn't show it to you yet.
Do they have, just out of curiosity, do they have incentive to take these trees down? That seems crazy that it's fifteen, eleven hundred out of fifteen hundred?
So we, we are saying, those are in imminent danger of failing.
And what does that mean?
Within a year
That the branch could hit it or that the tree could fall down?
The tree is either dead, diseased or dying. So those are to, you know, according to arboriculturists, that's an imminent danger of failing. So if we can take that tree down, we feel, and I, I can't guarantee this, nobody can guarantee it, but it's a good chance that within the next year, just on its own, or a small storm, or definitely a large storm.
Well, can you, can you give us the distribution of the classification dead, diseased or dying? Because, you know, this was all field around nineteen ten, nineteen twenty up here. Everything was field, and it was at that time that the transition went from basically farming agriculture to a different type of agriculture. And everyone let their fields go, so all of our trees are in the process of like dying. A lot of the mature trees that we all know and love basically are in decline.
Right.
Because of their age.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, to me, the dead trees, that's like a frigging no brainer.
Well, so
And the diseased trees to a certain extent, depending on the extent of the disease, because it's, you know, some of it's just starting and some of it is like well on its way. I kind of feel that, to, to support at least in that point, I kind of feel depending on where it is, I think you guys really need to give greater clarification around that. And I think for them, just to call dead, diseased or dying and saying, you know, out of the fifteen hundred trees around this area, eleven hundred are in that condition, which is over like a seventy-five percent of the total available trees, just seems
So, so yeah, I think the numbers might be confusing.
We're not talking fifteen hundred Newcastle with the hook.
No, 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 no.
No, fifteen hundred in the three counties.
We're here for the tape and everybody, you don't
We've surveyed, we've surveyed on particular circuits that we've identified.
Right, of course.
We've identified fifteen hundred
Mm-hmm.
that are, that are in that condition, there's plenty of others that are not.
Oh, oh, of, of
Might be a hundred thousand trees that are in there.
Yes, right, right. Right. And there are some that have no impact on our system. You know, they're a thirty-foot tree that's fifty foot away, so yeah, we're not looking at any of those.
Yeah, they're far away.
The other thing we're trying to concentrate on is our, what we consider our critical infrastructure. So if we have a pole with a transformer on it that feeds consumers right there, yeah, that's critical infrastructure. If we have a single phase that's feeding one house down a line, it's less, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm not
No, no, it's totally understood.
It's, you know, it's a less of a critic, criticality for what we're trying to pick. So we're going to go, and then, you know, we didn't, I forget what the last number I gave you, but it was, you know, eleven hundred and thirty imminent. We have permission, or we got permission on over seven hundred of those to remove. Most people are in, you know, with us on this, they get it.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, most, most of the ones that we did not get permission is because we couldn't get in contact with people, not because they said no.
No.
Very rarely are people saying, there's a couple, I'm going to say maybe less than ten actually, that people actually said, no, we don't want you to do that. If anybody's, you know, if you've ever taken trees down at your house or had somebody do it, it's very expensive. And we're averaging about a thousand dollars a tree to do it.
And in Portland, what was it, ninety-eight percent approval rate?
Yeah, I think it was ninety-eight percent.
Really?
You guys don't replant trees or contribute to the funding?
Nope. Right now, we're cutting them down, so, you know, like I said, you can, you can go outside to a vendor contract, probably two thousand, three thousand dollars a tree for a really big tree.
Yeah.
So if you
You should check out some of the trees on my property, I mean, they could, they could impact your, your, your critical infrastructure.
It's, it's, um
What about those locations where there's just branches shooting out in between through the wires, so it's not, because for example, one seventeen, there's a lot of, it obstructs line of sight, which is a different issue, which may be more of a municipal issue, but
If they're
Your forty-sixth branches.
If they are within the spec that we have for trimming, they should get trimmed during the cycle trimming once every three years. Now, one of the things we're trying to do is is to gather a lot of information, right? It's, it's easier to do that now, we have the vendor doing all this work for us. What we want to try to identify is where we have fast growing trees, and where we have fast growing areas, and maybe our cycle needs to be adjusted in those areas, maybe there's other areas that the cycle doesn't need to be as quick because we don't have the type of trees. So we have to, I think, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is become more of a vegetation management program rather than a tree trimming program. So it's, it's, it's tough, it's, it's, you got to get a lot of information, you got to get a lot of data.
Is it some, is it worth it to you if the town provides you information about trees that also became issues for line of sight in roadways? That may not impact your issue, but at the same time, if it's coming through your wires, it's still a line of sight problem, so it's marriage of the two issues.
In case you want to take it down.
No, no, it's a marriage of the two issues, but it may be on year one of your, of your cycle, so why wait for two years? Anything that's a line of sight issue, probably what you're talking about, stuff coming through our wires, our wires are typically on the top. You're talking about the telecom wires on the bottom. Especially if you go one seventeen, you'll see a lot of wires being, a lot of trees leaning on the telecom wires. When you're driving by, you say, oh, look at that, they're leaning on the electrical lines, they're not.
They're not.
Because anything like that would have been trimmed on our three-year cycle.
So I'll pass this around, do you want to take a look at it? So this is how we trim, right? So it's, it's ten feet on the bottom, ten feet on the side, fifteen foot on top.
No, no, we, we actually
Do you have that?
Yeah, that's been on
Well, I don't know, I got
Yeah, yeah, so you have it.
You want to finish what I was saying, there could be a marriage between our issues and the other issues.
I didn't stop before you said
You were laughing, chocolate.
I didn't stop.
It's very hurtful.
If So was I.
So if you
So was I.
If you have issues, I'll give you a perfect example, right? In most storms, one of the big issues we all have is road, road blockage, right?
Right.
Roads that need to be cleared. So if you have an area that you think is, is a critical road, if that marries up with our wires being on that road and it's critical infrastructure for us, which a lot of times they are because they're main roads, that's to both of our advantages, if you identify things like that, let me know about it, we'll take a look at it, we'll survey it.
Well, the main cats to the hospital, so one seventeen certainly, one twenty, one thirty-three, I mean, we would certainly
Yeah, right. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we looked at some stuff on Underhill Road in Yorktown, and that's a critical path to get to the train station, that's, people travel at all the time.
Absolutely.
Their emergency vehicles are always traveling. So we're willing to look, anything you want to provide us?
Okay.
I'm more than happy to go out and take a look at it, and if it matches up with what we can do, you know, if it needs trimming and it's off-cycle, but it's, but it's really covered, that's fine, we can do some of that. If there's hazardous trees within that span, you know, those, those couple of spans or wherever it is, we'll make it part of the program.
So question I've got for you is, is that, so I very much appreciate this flyer, but the issue is, is that this actually isn't the work that you're doing when you do your storm hardening, because you're taking down the hazardous trees or you're doing significantly more trimming than this.
Right.
No, actually, we don't do any trimming while we're taking the hazardous No, actually, we don't do any trimming while we're taking the hazardous trees.
Okay, okay, right, but but when I asked for like what was the mailing that was going out to the neighborhood
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
to let like neighbors know that you were gonna be like, you know, Mount Kisco, Armont Road, Mount Kisco, Taylor Road, to let them know that you were gonna be in town, um, that you had the permission from property owners, that you had identified dead, dying, diseased trees, and that you were trying to be proactive and, you know, keeping everybody's lights on. This isn't gonna stop people from calling up and getting all upset that they're coming down, they're trimming, you know, they're taking down trees, they didn't ask anybody, which is oftentimes what happens in these neighborhoods, um, where people are very concerned about the, you know, you take down,
Right.
I mean, you're talking about twelve trees, fifteen trees, these are big old trees, people are gonna notice.
Sure.
So, um, is there some sort of just maybe more more targeted letter that you could send to communities just to let the note or provide to me so that I can send out notices, you know, in my administrator's report?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I don't think you really thought about that.
I mean, we haven't, but if we get that information, I can certainly send it to you and you can put it out on.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I.
If you wanna, on your website or.
Yeah, because I'd like to be able to incorporate this in, you know, in notifications that we give to the general community, that you guys are out, that you're doing this, that you have the permission of property owners, and that you like the eleven tree of disease.
Right.
Oh, I see. Well, the whole permission of property owner, since I was part of the storm hardening Alapartis Road sweep that you guys did in the T-town area, but I was the year after.
Okay.
You would not done the one, the big swap you did on Spring Valley was, and Glendale was one swap, I was the year after. The only thing I got was like this little notice that barely told me any inform any information with no number to contact, or if there was, I called and I got nobody. That said, we're gonna be in your area, because I, for one, would probably have not only allowed them to cut trees, but pointed out additional trees that you should probably take down.
Right, and I will tell you that one of the things we've done.
So I have to tell you, I was very, I mean, that was a year after the whole thing, and Con Ed came in, nice lady, very, very persuasive, you know, this will never happen again, and then, yeah, Jane.
Well, I will tell you this, we, since last March, right, we've, Luigi and I have both been on the same team with our our uh Orange and Rockland. And one of the things we recognize is, number one, we had all different mailers and different things that went out between the two companies. So we've really streamlined that, we've got pretty much the same information going out. And one of the things that's good is to get hear back from people, cause I think our assumption was, well, we're talking to the property owners, we're telling them we're gonna take the tree. But we didn't talk to the neighbor, and we didn't talk to somebody down the block, in this case, when we do trimming, we're trying to tell everybody, we're trying to come out and
Yeah, right. 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 Right, right, yeah.
Do a mailer, we also have what we call contractor foresters, there are people that work for the vendor, who actually go to each customer and tell them what we're doing.
Yeah. Okay, I think.
But when we, when we did danger trees or hazardous trees, we were only going directly to the property owner.
Yeah.
So if it, if it makes sense to go and and tell more people about it?
Yes, it's fine.
And these neighborhoods, it definitely does.
We're fine, we can get the.
No, absolutely, the problem is, some of these neighborhoods are like historic neighborhoods, where the trees actually
Yeah, we can get, we can get the message out. Right.
add to the character of the neighborhood, so if you start taking trees down, even though you have permission maybe from the actual property owner, and one of these neighborhoods is right where I live, I guarantee you, people will be up in arms that that trees in this historic neighborhood are coming down.
Yeah.
Like Taylor.
How really, how really?
I was thinking Taylor Road is one of those roads, I remember four or five years ago going through there with an augerist,
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
Yes.
There no nowhere, highness, sorry.
And it was, and, yeah, and and there were dead tree after dead tree after dead tree, and they wouldn't let us touch any of them.
The nature, yeah. Yeah, I I.
But there's.
Yeah, cause they have the character of the.
I have, I have. Right.
Right, so if we don't get the word out, so that you, you know, frankly, so that everybody's aware and they're on notice,
But don't tell anybody now.
Sure.
How do my parents say we should put it out?
I I think it will soften the impact to the.
So I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't clear.
I'm sure it would be better to, if we got that information to you guys and you put it out, so that we don't have customers getting it from us and then attacking the neighbors.
I'm I'm fine to do that.
Yeah, we could put it, we could do a targeted code red.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you have you got from the permission? Have you guys already got from the permissions, yes?
Yes.
On two of those, yeah, we have.
On on these two, I missed their receipt.
There are only two, you said there was a third one.
There's a third, I just don't have specifics on that one yet, so.
And then Melvin.
Yes, yeah, but but for the, yes, they have the permission, they have the permission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about the, um.
But we we should, the whole neighborhood should know.
The trunks. You're gonna grind them down, uh, you can.
For sure?
No, we don't try to stump them.
We do the stump.
At least a stump, half way.
They leave the stump.
They leave about three feet.
Three feet?
No.
Yeah, not that much.
No, shouldn't be more than eighteen inches.
Yeah, it's usually good.
But they probably owners obviously know this. Right, yeah, when when we, when we go and talk to the homeowners, we explain exactly what we're gonna do.
Because when you guys did the West End that time, you left like six feet, you probably came back later.
It was the top.
That.
That, well, that was part of the problem, right, the problem was that we do that in two parts, we went, we cut enough down so that we can follow up with a log truck, attach a log truck to the top of it, and then cut it down and then take it away.
Right.
When people were coming home, they were looking at that, and they're thinking they couldn't have left this finished product, and we didn't.
Ten feet, right, exactly. And that's why the.
That's where we felt.
Yes, that's exactly what it was.
Right, cause that's as bad, like.
So I I will tell you, from when we were doing it back then, we have a completely, I wouldn't say different setup, but we have dedicated crews that are just doing this, and a log truck is part of the process.
I would say, I should say it depends on the vendor, because I definitely saw back where where I live in the West End, um, that, you know, they were cutting trees instead of picking up and actually taking the trunks away, they were sawing them into like five-foot things and then hucking them down the slope.
You shouldn't be doing that.
I thought so.
So if anybody does that, let me know, cause I'll take care of it with the vendor.
Yeah.
That's why I'm getting the number.
So I mean, it's like it really was not a well-managed, well-run operation on any level.
And it is much, like Tommy said, it's much different today, um, because the hazardous tree program has incorporated a log truck and the cutting truck, and they go out together.
Yeah, and we and we've, we've learned, I'm gonna be honest, we've, we've seen some of the mistakes that have been made and and what we need to do to change that. And I think we're, at least what I'm trying to do is, is make this part of the program, you know, when it's a one-off and you do it one time, I think it's just, okay, just get it done, finish that project, and we'll get back to what we really do. This is part of what we should be doing, if you check around, um, I know Connecticut, they just signed, I don't know how many millions of dollars to do a a different kind of program where it's trimming and hazardous tree removal and herbicide, and they're looking at it as a vegetation management program. They're not looking at it as a tree trimming, and I think we're, we're moving in the same direction. So, and we, listen, I've been to a couple of meetings where, where people have asked us, can I leave a fifteen or an eighteen-foot trunk of a tree?
Right, for a snag, for a snag.
For wildlife, yeah, with a snag, right, so I mean, it's it's all a little new to us, I think, you know, and we're trying to to incorporate that, and so if we're hearing that you wanna know so we can let neighbors know, that's fine, it's good information for us, and we'll take that back and make it part of the program.
Yes, you just forward it to my director, uh, my attention, also, um, my uh, my DPW was just interested in the in the, um, the location, the addresses of the trees, just so that, um.
I can give you the, we can give you the exact location.
That's fine, um, that's not going to be clear publicly, but.
Yeah, no, that's fine, we can do that.
Provide the.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, we have a uh, a database where we're tracking all this, we know who the customer is, we know where the tree is, we have tags on them now that can identify them specifically.
Perfect.
So, yeah. Okay, terrific.
All right.
Yeah, but I mean, I'll leave you my name and information, and if you have any questions, please call me there.
All right, just gonna.
I don't have any cards, yeah.
I would write it down and say nothing.
And you'll get us, you'll get us that letter sooner or later than we can sense.
Yeah. Sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, we'll try this week.
Yeah. Pretty much, yeah.
Do you have a security personnel, uh, security detail when you come to Newcastle?
Yeah, so far, we haven't needed it.
Luigi.
Yes.
You haven't been to Newcastle.
You weren't on, you weren't on those phone calls.
Ashley?
Luigi is on all those phone calls, you are, oh, yes.
I was, oh.
Yeah.
My apologies.
You may get, you you may get, you you know, I'm not saying you need security detail, but you may get some people that are not happy.
And we expect that, uh, because.
Right, so I, yeah, I'd just like information about when you're coming, be able to let everybody know, and no surprises.
Absolutely.
So far, all pilot programs we've done, we've hit no resistance, um, people are happy that we're coming, the process is better. We're not leaving evidence of, you know, massacres going through the woods and massacring the area, um, so, so far, so good, we've learned. Um, we've taken what we've learned, what we've heard from all the municipalities, and we put it to use.
Well, why not enter a policy position, and just for PR position, and why don't you make a gesture of replacing some tree bank or planting trees or agreeing to?
It is, I have to tell you, it's, it's something that we have to consider, we, we, like I said, we're moving towards more vegetation management.
Right, if you talk about management, it's also replacing them.
I I don't.
But the only thing is where where that comes into play also is that we are a rate payer-based company, right? So what we wanna do is make our equipment efficient and safe. It really, in our rate case, does not have replacing trees, because it doesn't add to our system at all. You follow what I'm saying?
True, but there's a lot of things corporations and people do in life, it doesn't add to the bottom line, but, it's not your decision, I understand that, right?
Adds to the earth.
Yes, but it's. Right, and it.
Yeah, what Con Ed used to do years ago, and you guys probably know, I s- I found it online, if if somebody went paperless, they would donate, maybe it would've been a dollar or something, but they would donate money to a tree fund.
Right.
If people went paperless, so that is saving you actually money, and it it gives you the, it gives the, you're sending the right message also.
I think we're we're open to all those ideas, and I think it's, you know, the further we go with incorporating this into the overall program every year, we're gonna talk about those things.
We'll get more people who wanna comply, because they'll know that there's going to be something.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we we, we may, we may earmark that, and, you know, we'll have to go to the PSC and talk about it and see what they think, and, you know, but uh, it's definitely something we can think about.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
We love Con Ed, no matter what.
I'm not, I'm not gonna ask you to cast off.
Well, no matter what you may hear, no matter what you may hear.
I'm gonna be strong.
It's all strong, what?
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Space.
I don't know, you too.
In fact, I do.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, but you'll get me the information so I can circulate it.
All right. Absolutely, we will, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, terrific.
All right, Ally, you're up, sorry to keep you waiting, yeah.
Well, my God. So Nick, are there communities that require utilities to donate?
Hi.
How are you?
How are you?
How are you?
Not last heard of them.
Well.
I did, I'll get back to you on that second.
Okay, I feel like I read about that recently, where the women municipalities requiring Con Ed to donate to tree funds.
One hundred.
One hundred.
One hundred?
No, no, trees should work into it.
So you guys got some big beautiful stones.
Well, these may not be the uh.
They would not be the ones?
So I will just give a little background. So Ally and Stacy have been doing a lot of work, and uh, checking out rocks and other memorials and things like that. And, you know, I think they're, you know, would like to use the space by the gazebo for the memorial, and we have a landscaper who's willing to donate his services and willing to, you know, work on, um, what do you call it again, the uh, the survey, not the survey, we need to get him the survey.
Uh, right, a rendering, an artistic rendering, so.
A s- a rendering. Well, we don't wanna waste lots of time doing it, we don't know if we're gonna get, she's, she's basically wants to get permission to use the space by the gazebo.
So.
So the the proposed site would be on the Brookside of the gazebo, and the proposed memorial would consist of a weeping cherry tree, which we felt would symbolize the sadness and the suffering experienced during the Holocaust. A rock would sit at the base of the tree, kind of an organic aesthetically pleasing rock that would have a plaque on it engraved, um, describing, explaining the memorial, um, a bench would sit to the side of the tree, offering really a place for peaceful contemplation in this really nice, you know, the gazebo is such a beautiful piece of our town, and kind of behind it is very, a very peaceful spot. So we really, we did, we really loved that site, um, as Rob just said, the tree and the rocks and the building and the creation of this little bench would be donated by Manzer's Landscaping, um, and along with their landscaping services.
Where are we looking, I'm sorry, where's?
Okay, so so I apologize, so, um, South Greeley Avenue is on the bottom?
Oh, I know what, I know, I just know where you're on.
Okay, so this is the gazebo.
Yep.
Okay, um, and and I apologize, so this is, um, the stream is on your right-hand side?
Okay.
Right here, so. Right here.
It's right here.
Yeah.
So where are you proposing the?
Wait, where is the stream?
It's here, this is the base part of it.
It's by, it's by where it says three oh seven, the um.
Where this is the stream, three oh seven.
So we had our pictures taken, we're running with Victoria.
Oh, years ago.
It's by, it's, it's where it says three oh.
That's just to like, put it like right back there.
I I know, I know where he is, I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't put this where we're going.
I'm there, three oh seven, yes.
Right, so.
Um, the other reason we love the, this site, um, is we felt like it would function so beautifully to hold the annual memorial and remembrance service with the gazebo so close to the site, in bad weather, you would still be able to hold, hold the, hold the service. Um, also, while survivors are still alive, and as we all know, they're really elderly, again, the gazebo just creates like a nice place for an easy access. Parking is really easy because you have Bell right across the street, um, and that's, I mean, that, that's the proposal of, you know, of of why we like that site. Um, the fundraising for this memorial, again, as we said, the landscaping services, the tree, the bench, the rock, this gentleman has really been incredible and said that he would, um, donate a lot of this, um, we do, we, I spoke to him last week. I do feel like putting together an artistic rendering that he typically does for jobs like this would be worthwhile. Um, we would need to pay for that, um, and probably pay for some of, some of this. Um, we, in the past, um, couple months, I've been also working on the creation of a club at the high school, and the name of the club is Enough, um, it stands for Educate Now on Understanding Genocide and Hate. And the kids who will be running the club could do the fundraising, um, I, there is a, something called the Worldwide Daffodil Project based in Atlanta, and what they had, their mission is, they are trying to, there were one and a half million children killed in the Holocaust, and they are trying to plant bulbs worldwide, uh, dap, sorry, plant daffodils to, for each child killed, and they are up to about six hundred thousand daffodils planted. I did reach out to them, and what they do is if you, they obviously only do this in Holocaust and memorial sites. They, um, if they, you know, you decide to do this with them and they decide to do this with you, the first two hundred and fifty bulbs, they actually give to you for free. Along with that, they give you a whole, uh, array of gardening and planting and how you do that, um, they also make a memorial plaque that you would display in that daffodil garden, and then they ask you over the next two years to purchase bulbs from them at thirty cents a bulb, and you purchase a minimum of two hundred and fifty additional bulbs, which is just seventy-five dollars. So what I thought was in the fall, the student club could have a table at Community Day, they could sell the bulbs, the ones that we buy, not the ones that we get for free, um, as a way to fundraise for the memorial. Then, we can also have a multi-generational town planting day in October, cause you plant the bulbs in October, and that could be just an incredible way to kind of get everyone now to this memorial, people know about it. And then in the spring, when we have the service, um, that is when the daffodils are blooming and the cherry tree is in bloom as well.
Actually, they won't quite exactly match up.
But not exactly, but but they, but.
I was actually gonna say, if you're gonna, if we are gonna invest in the rendering, um.
We're not asking a pound to pay for it, I mean, it's it's only three hundred bucks, right?
Right, we would, we would, we would privately pay for it.
No, no, that's fine, um, I I don't even have a problem with Tom paying for it, um, what I was gonna suggest you do is perhaps talk to them a little bit about the timing of the blooming, so expectations are set, since it might be the variety of cherry tree that you buy.
Yes, no, that's right, yes.
Okay, and then the second thing is, um, you know, seven hundred and fifty bulbs, one of the nice things about them is, you know, they kind of, if they're taken care of properly, they, they will go thicker over time. And so you may want to ask him to, um, kind of give you like how he wants the swath of bulbs to be planted, so that.
Right, when we're out there planting, we're not just willing, you know, willing, merely like planting them everywhere, yeah, yes.
Will, right, will.
Well, that's the vendor, that's the vendor.
Yeah, and then, um, the other thing is, uh, if he could just take a look at the existing plantings that are out there, because the shade from the cherry tree may actually require that certain things will place with more shade on our plantings on the northwest corner of that property.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so Yom Pivor is October ninth?
It is, it's, it might be a nice time to do it, yeah.
To do what?
To plant the bulbs, I mean, we, yeah, it's probably not on Yom Pivor, but around.
Plant the bulbs. Around, right, yeah, so that, it's a winter, so it's a spring.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, this is streaming, they can't, they can't come on our side of the stream.
Yes.
I I raised that issue before.
But the shell is not gonna be, you still have that stream and a lot of space after the Yom Pivor, you know, between the, this memorial is and where the stream is, there's a lot of space in the shell. The shell station is expanding a little bit, but it's gonna be on the other side of the stream, so it's not gonna, I mean, the shell station will be closer to the stream, but there's still a lot of space from the stream on our side of the gazebo, to where their memorial is, yeah, yeah.
To where we're proposing, yeah.
And we could potentially ask them to do a little screening on their side.
Screening, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I actually went and looked, because for some reason, my head, I thought this area was smaller than it is, but it's actually a pretty nice.
Size.
Yes, nice size, and I, I thought it would be a nice place for it.
We're we're gonna get a full map of this, so that you'll be able to, will be able to actually go out there and figure out exactly where we want to be.
Where, okay.
Now, something I I wasn't gonna raise, but it's, since it's going so well, I'm gonna raise it, you know, the possibility, I know you guys mock me for town committees, but uh, and this is, and this is Ally's idea, so.
Just me.
But what's.
So mock me.
Rocker.
Never.
What is it, the Holocaust and Human Rights Commission, as opposed to committee?
Commission.
And and they would be in charge of, so we we talk about it with programming at the gazebo, not just the yearly event, but also if you have a speaker, um, if we have movies, um, it would be this, this group that would do it and work on it, and work with the high school, and then education, like Ally actually put on a great program, uh, last month, which she brought in a speaker, a Holocaust survivor to this, to the high, to the school.
Yeah, last, last week, in fact, I brought, um, a survivor to the eighth graders who are just beginning their unit on World War Two. And then actually, on June tenth, Monday, June tenth, a survivor is coming to speak to the tenth graders who just completed their unit on World War Two and their project of genocide studies. So it's really a primary source to have them, you know, and this is, I don't know, I did post it on Facebook, but, um, the woman who came, who is almost ninety, gave a three-minute opening remark and started with, you are the last generation that are going to be able to hear us speak. I mean, I I, and what she then, in in three minutes said, I I couldn't have even scripted it any better, but just the responsibility that they have being this last generation, hearing them, um.
Can you bring that to the, a wider audience?
Well, that's the goal, I suppose.
Well, that's the goal. Like have them at Chopac or something, and, and more people with them.
That's, that's the goal, and that's why this commission really would be beneficial, because, um, I think that was the feedback that I've heard, all the parents were saying, we wanna come, well, they're not invited to an eighth grade
Right, right, right.
presentation at ten thirty in the morning, or should, they shouldn't be, um, but they want to, they, so.
I had so much, by the way, hassle already, so some of these communities are actually doing this because this is the last generation to, uh.
But it's a, but it's a model, you're just gonna be the world.
Yeah, yeah, I would try that.
That'd be nice.
Holocaust, no, it's, it would be Holocaust and human rights, this would be called the Holocaust and Human Rights, it could say Education Commission. I mean, I was kind of modeling it off of, um, something that exists in White Plains, but it it is, it's really surrounding education and awareness, and, you know, the incre, obviously, we all know, the increase in hate crimes across the globe locally in our nation, um, in schools, um, in schools in particular, hate crimes have increased. Um, in schools in particular, hate crimes have increased, um, over the past two years, twenty-five percent. I mean, it's a huge number. Um, and it's not just, it is antisemitism, it's not just, it's, it's tolerance, it's anti-bigot, it's everything. So, this just comes at a moment in time when it's so important, and not just to be reactive to something that happened, but what I'm trying to say is, let's be proactive, let's teach them, let's build their characters, build these students' characters. And then, across our town, across our community, same thing. I mean, just get, just keep the awareness.
You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, so we have an, an organization, um, that's funded through grants called Newcastle United for Youth.
Uh, where I work with them, so.
Um, and I, I would love to connect you with them, because this is all part of it, just, just building strength of character.
You know what, I had connected with them, I will tell you why, because this, this past year, I actually chaired the, um, Soffmores Safe Drive Bourbon. And in order to do, we were at, the woman and I who chaired it, we were asked to kind of re, I wouldn't say use the word recreate, but just rejig it a little bit. Um, the attendance had been low over the past few years. So, we met with the women of the Newcastle United for Youth, who were amazing, and they did help us, and it was really successful, so. But I, I did speak to them, um, I think prior to speaking to you in February, so they do know about this.
Because that, it would be a, a really nice collaboration, and, uh, you know, the, 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 the mission is so closely aligned.
I think what they are concerned at the moment, I'm not gonna speak for them totally, but they are so focused on substance abuse, that there wasn't as, that this was more, um.
There's a big piece of.
Yeah.
They sort of have to be, or.
No, 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 I, I, yeah, that, that is definitely, and, and they're, um, they're funded specifically for that purpose.
This is a little different. For that.
Right.
But the whole bullying and, um, tolerance is all part and parcel of that. Um, and it's very difficult to like separate it out, because, you know, it's almost cause and effect, so.
Yes. Yeah, no, and we did talk about, there's also like the Interfaith Council, and, and so we did, we talked about that.
Yes, very, yeah, yes.
I think they.
Um, there's so many pieces, um, but that was the one thing that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good, as long as you're aware of them, then.
Yes, yes.
Um, there's also a program you could look into, which I don't know if you.
Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I'd like to be sure that it doesn't overlap.
Right, I, it wouldn't be part of fundraising, but, um, I don't know, maybe somehow you can incorporate it, where children, doesn't have to be children, but they actually adopt a child who died in the Holocaust.
Like a community. Yes.
Both of my kids did that.
Yes.
And it's actually pretty, um, like emotional and impactful, yeah.
Impactful, yeah.
So, I don't know, somehow I can get your name and that, no, no, wasn't that coming to you?
It's twinning, yes, twinn, no, it's not twinning, it's, um, okay, will you, yeah.
I will get it to you.
Okay.
You know, well, what Ivy said is, is something I mentioned to you also, Ally, I just say it. Um, we just have to also be careful that we don't overlap with the inclusion and diversity committee. And we can look at their mission, and we can look at the mission of, you know.
I just think you might find a lot of people on that committee who are interested and be a part of this, and it's important.
Right, right, I know. But I don't mean it in a negative way, in a sense that we just wanna make sure everybody has a clear.
It's gonna be very talented, it's gonna be very specific.
Yeah.
It's gonna be very specific.
It's something very forceful, it's something.
And by the way, this, just a little thing, this rock, Ally didn't love this rock, let's be honest.
Wait, which one?
This one, it's a little flat.
A little flat, it's not very.
So, we may have found a better rock.
Well, you know, if. If you look at, uh, I'll tell you the most beautiful rock I ever saw in my prior life.
That'll make a good. Yes. Okay.
It's in a similar situation to this, absolutely breathtaking. Um, and it could be anything.
Yeah.
Uh, but there was an old cemetery up in Maine in Paris, whole main, the county seat, and it was sort of going up on a hill and it overlooked the presidential range, you know, and had all these things from like sixteen, whatever. Somebody had gone in and gotten sort of a natural formation of a rock completely reflect with mica.
Wow.
And so, what ended up happening is when the sun sitted, the rock kind of came alive and glittered.
It was a good rock.
It's like really. Yeah.
And I've seen people do it sometime, they do it with like amethyst quartz or something, so it's not, it doesn't look necessarily like a grave.
Right.
But at the same time, it has the solidity, and it kind of, um,
Yeah.
I would say kind of doesn't kind of have this box of definition around it, it allows people to maybe, uh, what I was gonna say is, put their own thoughts into the symbolism of what it actually means.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I, I feel like we haven't found our, our rock yet.
Right, right.
And I say that in the, in the most serious way, if you can imagine, but I did, I visited.
You visited, but you're.
I did visit, I visited rocks last week.
But I think if you go online and search for sort of like gemological rock formations or something like that,
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it might cost more, because they could be prized, but maybe not, because.
And one more thing real quick, and then we'll wrap it up. Ally, you had a good idea, which was to incorporate the, the kids, the high school group into coming up with a quote,
So, okay, so.
to put, to put on the, on the rock.
So, on this rock, I thought of two things, that we could, we'll have the plaque, and I thought it would be important, on the, uh, the first part of the description, to describe what the memorial is and why we felt it was important to make it. And on the second part of the plaque would be a, an existing quote describing something, you know, something about the Holocaust. And that second part of the plaque, this quote, I think that this Greeley Club, as their first, um, back-to-school event, would be to have not an essay contest, but a contest within the student body to ask the students to come up with an existing quote, not a quote that, that they're writing, but an existing quote with maybe a three to five, you know, sentence essay, paragraph, you know, short essay, explaining the significance to them.
And by the way, with the town committee, also, we could have some student members, just like they do in Stop and with Sustainability Project.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
The company's called Remember Us.
Remember Us, okay.
So, the goal is to give kids a huge role, because they are the generation that's seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and un, unfortunately, I did, I went to many Yom Hashoah events in, over this past month, and I just kept noticing the average age of the people there are not just survivors, are just the people that are there and are interested in remembering are really old. And it's so important to really engage our, our kids, because it's, it's just, they're not coming around, so.
Okay, this was really impressive, yeah, very cool.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to do, um, the gun violence discussion?
Sure, you gotta take a picture too.
And then we jump to the.
Good night, Ally, thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, 'cause then we're gonna break the romantic review session.
Okay. So, it's just a resolution, actually, Lee, Lee Barth, um, reminds my attention again, that, uh, you know, towns are being asked to pass this resolution. I did actually, Joe, the one you have in the packet, I, it's the, uh, the one I amended.
What, sorry?
It's, um, wait, so what I did is, I added Town of Newcastle.
Okay.
I think I did eliminate a last sentence, which, um.
One seventy-one.
One seventy-one.
Thank you.
Thank you for numbering, by the way.
It's so much better.
I suggested.
It was a great suggestion.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
You're so welcome. I'm gonna change your numbers next time, okay?
Revolutionary there.
Well, it took us long enough, how long?
Yeah, so basically, I, I should have, uh, sung the other one, but it's basically, uh, it's essentially the same thing. Let me see if I can just find it real quick, on my side now.
Hope you record it all behind.
So, are we approving it tonight?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes. Or what, do you wanna move something, or no?
No, I just wanted to show you guys what the, the original version and what, I mean, it's essentially the, uh, the same. I just didn't wanna, uh, they actually, she asked that we, we don't make too many changes to it, so I didn't.
Um.
I'm just gonna find the email.
From Mrs. King.
I just thought the change to say, is it, is yours very different? Like, to say you should wear orange on the first.
Friday of June?
Friday of June, but then they have twenty nineteen, isn't it every June?
But we would probably do this again.
Yeah, we do it every year, though.
Why?
Oh, I got, I got the original one.
Yeah, why? On June seventh, twenty nineteen, probably the first Friday of June.
Why, because otherwise you forget by eighteen, you do it every year, you make sure it's.
As the fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
So, the, the, the three main changes were, one is refers to mayors, you know. Okay, so, I didn't put supervisor, I made it to Town of Newcastle, right?
Wow.
Okay.
The other, and then I, there was a couple of, so that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
And then the last sentence, which we can put back in, but I, I did take it out. It's basically says, again, it, it, it ends with the mayor. The mayor of the city of so-and-so declares that Friday in June seventh, two thousand nine, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Then it says, "I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic offense, of, effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives."
Okay, so we just add, it's, it's.
I guess we can add it, but it's, it's.
It's quite, it's quite.
It seems a little bit, uh, honor, value, human lives, that is sort of like, give it a, close country, let's see.
I just thought it was, yeah. I just thought it weird to say we declare the first Friday in June
Honor, value, lives, almost kind of freaking, uh.
to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, I don't know, I, I just feel like it's.
It's the fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Right, that makes more sense then, unless you wanna say the first Friday in June.
Okay, then just say that.
Well, it's, it's quite a little bit, it's a bit of a tragic effect of gun violence.
Unless you wanna say the first Friday in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day,
At least it's the first Friday in June. Yeah, yeah.
In Newcastle?
And June seventh, twenty nineteen, will be the fifth such day, or something like that, like, it just was written weird. But I'm all for it, each day.
Should put back in that sentence, I don't know why I took it out at that time, it was too, I, it's, again, I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts.
We support, we, we.
Yeah, we support.
It would be, we encourage all residents
We encourage.
to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Yes, it's perfectly fine.
I don't think anyone would want to, uh.
Why would that be, why would that be controversial?
Well, it's, it was, I, it was also because I just wanted to say, to support their local communities, I just felt they was like,
No.
It wasn't really.
No, I like the, as we would, being heard.
Yeah, rewritten, it makes, it's better rewritten, the way it was here, it seemed like, it was more from the organization speaking to the mayor, as opposed to the resolution speaking to the.
I'm pulling us today.
Right, exactly.
Who's reading it?
Well, Rob, do you wanna read it, or is it a little easier?
This whole resolution?
Yeah, give it a try.
Oh, God.
She has to see these looks.
Here we go.
Wait, but didn't we just amend, didn't we make some changes? No, this is the changed version, right?
No, I, I did.
No, we discussed, discussed some changes too.
Isn't it all to the last paragraph?
Like, they're now therefore.
No, it's just the last paragraph that would be changed.
No, it was the next page.
Yeah, just the last paragraph.
Just the last paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I made other changes, but that's just changing mayors to Town of Newcastle.
You're changing the paragraph.
And we're gonna put paragraph five.
All right, so this proclamation declares the first Friday, oh, correct me if I, if we're gonna make it generic, right? We're gonna make it generic for every Friday, right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So, this proclamation declares the first Friday in June, that one is good.
Yes, that's right.
To be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Town of Newcastle, to honor, remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, a hundred Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, three are, there are nearly thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas protecting public safety and the communities we serve is our biggest, is our highest responsibility. And where our support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas in June two thousand thirteen, Adaya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, and was tragically shot and killed just three weeks, just weeks later, should now be celebrating her twenty-second birthday. And whereas to help honor Adaya and the one hundred Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations had designated June seventh, two thousand nineteen, the first Friday in June, as the fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Adaya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June, on, let's say, the, uh,
Every June seventh, on the first Friday in June.
The first Friday in June, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on the first Friday in June, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our permit to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep, to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be resolved that we declare the first Friday in June to be National Gun Awareness Day. And one more sentence.
Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Uh, Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all residents to, to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Christine, I'll send you the amended.
Great, thank you.
That's it, we'll take a picture at some point.
Okay.
So, I, uh, move to, uh.
Move to executive session?
Executive session, to advise the council of contracts.
First now?
And personnel.
So, move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Should we take a picture now?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're, we're back.
What is this? We're back. Somebody appreciates my humor. Okay, welcome back, everybody. So, uh, let's see what we got here. I think we are talking about proposing Greeley Sanitary Sewer District expansion. Discussion, let's discuss sewers.
Oh, um, sorry, just thought we were up to revolution.
You just skipped the whole thing?
I just gave, I just skipped the whole.
Wow. I told you why I said this.
We're done. So, um, there's a memo in the file, we have a request from someone who has a failing, um, septic system, um, who was within the Sommel Sewer District to connect to a, uh, the King Greeley Sewer. Um, and so, there will be a, a petition that will be coming along with maps. Um, and, um, basically, it's, um, it's something that we've, we've done before. Um, the new house is on King Street, and there's this new development within the King Greeley Sewer District. Um, some parcels are actually in it and connected to the sewer district, some parcels are actually pay the tax, but are on septic.
But why, what, by bottom line is, by the way that we allow them, they're in the district.
She, she is, but she has to petition it, and that way, once we get all the paperwork, she's, it's included in the tax bill, yeah. So, those, link the rest of the.
And there's no, um, just because it's been mentioned at fast, there's no approval from the controller required, because no money is being spent to, uh, by the town or by the taxing district to fund the improvements that's being paid by the property owner who wants to extend it.
Right.
Let's see if the boss is fixing their septic.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Next.
Um, okay, we're back to the wetlands law. So, um, there, um, there were recommendations by Steve about the wetlands law. Um, there was concern that the shed was, um, too large, and so we've reduced it down in size. Um, um, yeah, it's reduced down from two hundred square feet to one-twenty. Which measures the New York State law? Okay. All right. Uh, the next is, we, um, we found out that there was actually an ambiguity in our law regarding how to measure the height of a fence, so we'd like to just be able to clarify how we measure the height of a fence. I know.
Seems kind of obvious.
And yet.
I think we should do it in hands, I think we should do it in hands, like do horses. Let's be the official, the measuring.
There was an issue.
There was an issue, so we need to clarify it, so here it is.
Right.
Okay, um, it has, um, come to our attention that, um, Recreation has, um, received authorization for all part-time employees that they hire, including, uh, campers, that is going, to be coming shortly. Um, but they did not receive, um, uh, basically, um, authorization for the independent contractors. Um, last year, Labor Council went through and actually corrected a mistake that we had been doing. We had been treating all of our, um, uh, non-full-time employees as part-time employees, when in fact, some of them were part-time employees and some of them were independent contractors. So, now that we've set that straight, um, Recreation still needs authorization to be able to pay them. Authorization for paying can only come from the town board, so we realized that there had been a gap in our approvals, so this is our efforts to close that gap. Okay. Um, and then we've also got camp staff.
Excuse me, is there a mini warrior camp?
Natasha does that.
That's really cute.
And then, um, we have our blanket approval to hire for our campers, our counselors, rather. Um, that's attached to it as well, which we do every year, so we're all squared away. We've got our proclamation on this.
Did gun violence ready, so bag law?
Um, New York State Bag Law, request to the county, um, for an email in support.
That was the letter that, just to sign that letter, this resolution to, uh, we could need the resolution, but just basically to approve the letter.
We have, oh, we have sent it out.
That the SIBs recommended we send.
Great. Um, and, um, we have a request for, um, our, uh, contract extension with Alstec, which is something that Steve normally handles, so it was very appreciative that the, uh, the bar stepped in and just, um, reminded us that this needs to be done.
All right.
Good news is we're going to be due to the position tomorrow, which is pretty great.
I'd love to.
So, can we just have, I, I was gonna say, before we move on, did we, did we talk about the numbers yet?
No.
No.
Okay, before we move on to resolutions?
Hold on, that will catch.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right.
Um, okay, and then we go on to. Um, we're gonna have a payment of claims, um, there is, uh, just, uh, a service agreement, um, for the primary disinfection at the Millway Water Treatment Plant, I'm very. and also um filter media at the Millway Water Treatment Plant, just one of the many. Okay. Numbers.
Okay, so I'm just looking at this and I have a couple questions, um.
Sure.
One is, has Boswell taken care of the Health Department issues?
We met with the Health Department um last uh, two, three, one, three, the the fifteenth. Um, we had a meeting with them, uh we came to an agreement that Boswell would um retest the first three manholes. Uh, the manholes that had not been tested above the joint for the sanitary sewer. Um, that's going to be tested, and there's some additional work that has to be um done by E O Q, it'll be done at night. Um, and it's going to be done before June twenty-fifth, which is our adjourn date for the Department of Health. Boswell will then certify the results of that and give it to the Department of Health. And that should resolve the outstanding issues with the Department of Health.
What is the question?
All of them, right?
Um, you need a um a the least amount of flow going through.
And.
We're not paying extra for that.
No.
Yeah, yeah, good.
And there was, there was the sanitary, and there was one other, was it the water?
There was also water, so I asked them about water, um John Caswick is supposed to provide updated asgils to the county uh for the water approval. And we're waiting for him to do that. And that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's on our bank account, it's awesome.
Well, okay, I just wanna double check because I'm looking at this right here, okay, um.
Right, sure.
Which one, where?
The last payment to Boswell was on June first, twenty eighteen.
June first. Yes.
Okay, then what I have on this backside is a not to exceed of two hundred and eleven thousand from four twenty-two to twenty nineteen.
Right, so that's for the work that they're currently doing, so we withheld the payment, which is two hundred.
Currently doing. No, no, I understand, I just wanna make sure there's no gap between the existing one million dollar estimate for them plus the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars outlined, that covers them.
No, they're not supposed to, they're gonna be along the rest of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, we have not received any additional building from them, actually, I think it's, we, eh, they had some tweaks on the contract, who was going back and forth.
And anything with E O Q and some of their.
No, that really should be discussed in a second, but that's good.
And is that something we'll get an update on next week?
Yes. Let's see, working progress. In the meantime, working progress.
The lamp posts were installed on Lower King.
Yes.
I noticed, I drove past.
Much to my surprise, because I really thought that they poured the con- they put the lamp posts in after, they poured the concrete.
I'm glad I texted a sus and also Mike told that lamp posts are coming next week. They probably weren't installed and ready when I texted.
Well, we literally, we literally had the conversation like fifty minutes.
I texted about five o'clock tonight, they're probably up already.
All I noticed were all the cones.
There's a thousand.
That's the gun awareness thing.
Art name.
Yes, yes.
Gun awareness thing.
Where are it?
So I move to approve the payment of claims is out of two hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred four dollars, twenty-four cents listed on the summary. Pre-check writing report in detail batch are detailed before each period of May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Checks will be issued amount each claim that lists on Wednesday, May twenty-second in the year of our supervisor, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I move to accept the proposal from, yeah, like that, I'm a water solution. USA Incorporated, amount of twelve thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars to perform preventative maintenance on the primary disinfection system at the Millway Water Treatment Plant for the period of May two thousand nineteen to May two thousand twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize a purchase of filter media for the Millway Water Treatment Plant as per quote from two one nine R J C in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and zero pennies from C E I Filtration. Uh, that's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint the downtown meeting groups to assist with the Chapel Climb Hamlet rezoning project, which will consist of all five town board members, planning board members, Bob Kirkwood, Tom Curly, Greg Zanzari, as well as architect Bill Spade and commercial property owners Steve Cavallucci and Randy Katches.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to correct the salary for Denise Lombardi, real property appraiser with the assessor's office, to nine one thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Effectively, effective retroactively to February sixth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one, are we going forward?
Yeah.
The changing the hourly rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I move to change the hourly rate for Courtney Spitz and intern in the court office from twelve dollars an hour to fourteen dollars an hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a slow.
Do the last one.
I move to authorize the highway department within the Department of Public Works to hire two summer help workers. Funds have been allocated for these positions in the twenty nineteen budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Alright.